On the following ordinances and resolutions. And Derek, I think maybe you want to tee us up?
I forget if I had my ordinance or not. The first ordinance is-
On off the press.
A zoning ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, considering Benita Lake Homeowners Association amending zoning ordinance 0410, adding a deviation to allow zero-foot side yard setbacks for mechanical equipment for the Benita Lakes Residential Plan Development located at 25580 Imperial Parkway, Benita Springs, Florida 34135, and providing for an effective date.
Okay. Thank you, Derek.
Hey, if there's anyone here who's going to be testifying, staff, applicant, or members of the public, I need you to please stand, raise your right hand, and be sworn. Do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right. Now that we can trust them, we can move forward.
Now, welcome.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. I'm Ron Grimming. I'm vice president of the Benita Lakes Homeowners Association, and we are requesting your approval for a plan development amendment. To better understand our request, I guess I better find the control here. To better understand our request, it's important to consider the following about Benita Lakes. Benita Lakes is located just north of the new Benita Springs High School and just south of Strike Lane. Benita Lakes was originated in 2011 as a single-family new home development by Toll Brothers, with a final build-out being 268 homes, and ranging in size from 2,000 to 4,000 square feet, and we encompass about 120 acres. During the summer of 2018, the city began denying permits for generators and pool installations due to the five-foot side yard setback restriction. Previously, the city had approved more than 60 generators with mechanical pad encroachments and more than 140 pool installations. It should be noted that none of these existing mechanical pad encroachments had any kind of negative impact on our impeded drainage. The city, this is some examples of the city-approved installations, and as you can tell from the photos, there's only about 10 feet between some of these houses, and you can see air conditioning units, there's generators. So the concern that obviously we have is we are faced with our challenge of having about 25 pool and generator install requests pending. Some of those are down at the city, and some of them are in our architectural review process. Our request is to add a deviation 13 to the Benita Lakes Plan Development, to modify side yard setback for mechanical pads from the current five feet to zero feet. This will allow our residents to install mechanical pads for whole-house generators, for pool equipment, and air conditioning units. The actions that we have taken, we met extensively with community development officials to understand the requirements. And I want to recognize John Dolmer, Tricia Goff, and Mary Zizo, who were very helpful in us completing our application and submitting it to the city. We filed the application with the city for the plan development deviation. We received city comments. We made adjustments required, and then we refiled. We held multiple meetings with community residents explaining the process, and also residents indicated an overwhelming support for the request, with particular emphasis on emergency power required for medical equipment like oxygen concentrators, dialysis units, ventilators, and refrigeration for some types of medication. If our request is approved, there will be no increase in density or intensity within Benita Lakes. There'll be no decrease in buffers or open space required by the LDC, no known impact on public resources or infrastructure, no impact on landscaping to preserve areas, and no impact to surrounding land use. And importantly, no impact on lot drainage based upon the following proposal and conditions discussed with city staff. The deviation would apply to mechanical equipment only. The equipment shall be a minimum of 10 feet from the equipment on the same or adjacent property. The generators will be situated as far away as possible from abutting dwellings, windows, and/or doors. The generator pre-selected exercise times would be restricted to the 10:00 AM, 4:00 PM timeframe, and the permit application will include exhibits showing how installation will not impede drainage. Additionally, the drainage exhibits will require the location of proposed mechanical pad with full measurements, existing elevations, drainage arrows, existing landscaping, existing gutters, other elements between the adjacent homes, and a narrative showing how drainage flow will not be impeded. City staff also proposed when mechanical equipment is to be located less than four feet from the property line, the following may be required. And that's written HOA approval, approval from adjacent property owner, elevated platform to ensure drainage is not obstructed. The elevated platform must provide a minimum of one foot of clearance area under the pad so drainage may pass. The area under the platform must also be maintained at all times. Gutters, downspouts to reroute drainage, installation of yard drains, landscaping alterations to ensure proper drainage flow, property line survey when the job is complete. A final grading and engineering inspection will be required prior to the certificate of completion of the building permits, and the above items may be modified if an acceptable alternate plan is provided. City staff also requested that we provide an engineering diagram of what we propose that the drainage will require. So we hired Grady Minor. We asked them to develop this diagram, and the diagram demonstrates the offset of mechanical equipment and the drainage flow through the swale. Unfortunately, I don't have a pointer, so I can't point it to you. I'm not sure how well you can see this, but I assume you have that with your-
Somewhere, I don't know how.
With your-
Right.
It's on the remote.
You're holding it. So this is it? Nope. Nope.
I don't know which button. One of the buttons.
Other button.
Don't worry about it.
Yeah.
You got the general drift.
Yeah.
On behalf of the residents of Benita Lakes, we thank you for your affirmative response to our request.
Thank you. Derek, staff, John, Jack, all right.
Hi, Mary Zizo, for the record. Our presentation agrees with everything that the applicant stated. We've met with them many times to come up with a plan that we hope you would be satisfied with in regards to drainage, noise, and neighbor concerns. I'll touch on anything that we haven't touched on before, just to keep it brief. So like they said, they're adding a deviation to their current zoning ordinance to allow for zero-foot side yard setbacks for mechanical equipment only. And we know where it's located. Prior to 2012, there was no language in our land development code which allowed for encroachment of mechanical equipment. So when we did create that amendment to 4-1892, it only provided for a three-and-a-half-foot encroachment if the side setback was at least seven-and-a-half feet. And because of this neighborhood, their side setbacks are five feet, therefore they cannot Since Irma, we've received many requests to be able to encroach with those mechanical equipment pads for generators and pool heaters if they're trying to put in a new pool, but we have those on hold as they're not currently permitted. Initially, they requested two-foot side setbacks, and after their neighborhood meeting, they realized that it wouldn't apply to the entire neighborhood because many of them are so close to the property line already that they wouldn't be able to fit the generator, so they're requesting the zero feet. So like I said, the only change they're making is to allow for mechanical equipment to be at the zero-foot side yard setback line. And as we referenced, even with the bigger lots that are eight feet from the side property lines, they still will not be able to fit the generator within what's required for the manufacturer. And so these are the current scenarios of the houses within the neighborhood. Some are closer and some are farther from the property line, as I mentioned, based on their different lots. As Mr. Grimming mentioned, staff does recommend approval subject to certain conditions such as only mechanical equipment. The generators must be the farthest distance from other dwelling unit windows indoors, and they must be at least 10 feet from other mechanical equipment on that property or the adjacent property. And then as he stated, we will require a narrative and drainage exhibit showing the installation and how it will affect drainage and will not impede the flow. This will require showing the gutters, drainage arrows, landscaping, elevations, and of course, the measurements of where the unit is to be located. And this exhibit is within your packets if you'd like to take a look at that. And we have our city engineer here as well if you have any drainage concerns. In addition, if they choose to use this method and locate the equipment closer than four feet from the property line, then we require written HOA approval, approval from the adjacent neighbor in the event that they have to crossover at some point. We may require an elevated open-style platform so as not to impede drainage. Gutters and downspouts may be required, as well as water drains and piping. Landscape alterations may be required, as well as a final spot survey of the placement and a final grading and engineering plan. And so we added that last item in the event that not all of those are actually required for each individual installation, so that they can provide an acceptable alternate plan. At zoning board, they recommended approval as conditioned in the staff report. And that is my presentation.
Okay. Great. Staff, anything else, or council, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second. All right. There's been a motion to approve, and-
Second.
A second, further discussion. Fred.
I wanted to ask John a question. John, a normal landscape installation is, what's the requirement that we have on putting some landscaping that kind of shields it from the road view of being seen?
For residential, we don't have one.
Oh.
For commercial, we don't shield it.
It's just why a lot of developers put it in.
Correct. Correct. In almost every homeowners association document, you'll see something that requires some sort of shielding, but it's not a city standard.
So what do they have?
I don't know.
Am we asking? How are you guys handling that?
Yes. In our architectural review process, we recommend that the residents put in some type of landscaping to help hide the mechanical equipment from the street. The one caveat is, and I think all of us learned from that process, is you have to be careful about where you place it with generators. You don't want to place it on the exhaust side because that's going to restrict the flow of air and the dissipation of air.
Or on the intake, or you also don't want to get it too close on air conditioners.
Correct.
But is that recommend or requires? Because there's a big difference.
Yeah.
Recommend means you think you ought to do it, but you don't have to.
It is recommended, but we do leave some leeway depending upon the nature and layout of the property and what other types of landscaping that they may have.
Okay.
Council, anything else?
I just had one quick question.
Yes.
Mayor, if you could go back to two pages, right there it says items A through H above may be modi-, or you kept saying you may ask for this, you may ask for that, these drawings. What's going to trigger that?
It'll be a case-by-case basis. So depending on how close the adjacent property is, where their other mechanical equipment is located between the two properties.
Okay. Could I just, I mean, I liked it before when you said four foot or less, you will require like the letter and the approval from the adjacent neighbor, but then we started like, eh, we may ask for on these last four or five.
In rare conditions, they could be located next to a common element that is entirely a drainage easement, so it won't necessarily affect a neighbor. They may not require all of that.
All right. I just, I don't like the, like, eh, I'm in a good mood today, I'm not going to ask for it. Not in a good mood. Let's see, I want more paperwork. All right. That's it, sir.
Great, thank you. Peter?
Yeah. I just wanted to thank Ron and Benita Lakes for going through this exercise. Frankly, it's on the benefit of a lot of communities throughout the city. Obviously, a lot of thought has been put into this, and it's very much appreciated.
Thank you. Okay, there's been a motion and a second.
Yeah, and Peter took what I took. So we are changing this for Benita Springs.
No.
Oh. But don't you think we should? I mean, the zoning, but the zoning committee recommended.
Oh, did they? Interesting. Yeah.
Well, if you, yeah.
Not today.
Okay, so.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? And do we have some public, yeah, anybody from the public that would like to speak on this item at this time? Please come forward. Okay, seeing none? Council, anything further?
Just if we do do it for the city, I think we should be thinking about amortizing some of their costs so they're not carrying the burden of Benita Lakes for this change for the whole town.
That's what we appreciate.
Yes.
I mean, really, yeah.
Okay, council, anything else? Roll call, please.
Councilman Dewitt.
Hi.
Councilwoman McCarr.
Hi.
Mayor Simmons.
Hi.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Hi.
Councilman Gibson.
Hi.
Councilman Forbes.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you to you and your team. Thank you for your hard work.
Okay, your next item is a variance. It is a zoning variance to the city of Benita Springs, Florida, requesting the granting of a variance from section 4-1894B of the land development code requiring a 25-foot setback from water bodies for an existing structure. The property is located at 5951 Carroll Street, Benita Springs, Florida 34134, and providing for an effective date.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name's Jim Mori. I'm an attorney with the firm-
Jim, before you get started-
Oh, yes.
If you have, anyone who's intending to speak on this item-
Sorry.
Please stand, raise your right hand, and do swear affirm, you've already done it, swear affirm that you intend your testimony to be the truth and the whole truth and nothing but the truth. Thank you.
Thank you, and once again, welcome.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon. So I want to give you just a quick overview. Staff did a fantastic job. The materials in your packet explain everything and all the technical details very, very well. I just want to do a brief presentation, give you an overview and some context that I think will be helpful. Okay.
I'll take your role once again.
Here we go. She's going to have to help me. There we go. So I want, this is a view of the property, aerial view of the property. It's a lovely property, right on the water there, as you can see. You can see very healthy mangrove growth around, along the water's edge. You can see healthy riprap. You can't quite see it on the southerly portion because it's covered by the mangroves, but that riprap contains all the way around the property. So it's a very well-maintained, beautiful property, very healthy. I go to the next slide, there, please. Okay. So drilling down a little bit more technically, you can see now the measurements. So what the variance is requesting, if you look in the southeast portion down the bottom of the right-hand side, we have a measurement of 16.46 feet.
Excuse me a second, just for, where is this exactly?
Yeah, let me see if I can.
Is it on the bay? May I just go over there? I don't have the pointer.
Yes, no, absolutely, of course.
So, okay. So if we go back to that survey, that would be helpful. Okay. So right here, 16.46 feet to the water's edge.
And you're on McLaughlin on the bay?
Correct.
Okay.
So that's one spot that we need the variance for. The other is here, and it's 20.8. And land development code requires 25.
This property was permitted through Lee County in 1999, and at the time, it was granted a complete permit. Everything was fine. So we're looking for relief on that southeast portion of approximately 8.54 feet, and then relief of 4.20 feet for the other measurement. Relief to what, the house? Correct. It's the-
The house is already there.
Yeah. The house is there. This is an after-the-fact issue that we, that we're dealing with.
Will the riprap keep it from eroding more? Because the problem is-
Yes, that riprap and-
So we won't be here in a couple more years needing the-
Well, frankly, the riprap looks healthy, and the mangroves are very important as well in terms of erosion issues. So this is zoning verification law. It was issued by the city. The bottom paragraph here basically confirmed that it was permitted by Lee County. Essentially, what we have, because it was properly permitted, you have a kind of nonconforming, currently nonconforming, pre-existing use. It's currently, as is, is legal just because of the way it was originally permitted. We're here today to ask for a variance, simply to ratify and confirm what we have, the existence of it. And I'll put a little more context in it. This is where I think you'll appreciate that. The property is sold in November of 2018. At that time, there was a survey done. The Benita Springs Land Development Code setbacks were looked at and compared to the survey. What was observed by the closing attorney was, wait a minute, something's not adding up here. We've got an issue. At that time, they didn't look into the pre-existing nonconforming use, didn't look into the permitting, didn't look at the prior permits. The issue arose that there was a discrepancy in the survey and setbacks. So what the parties did to go forward with closing is created an escrow agreement and put a very substantial sum of money into escrow, which is still retained in that escrow account now. The sole purpose of the escrow agreement was, please go get a variance. Get a variance, get a granted variance, escrow gets released, everybody's happy. Going forward, if the new current owner goes to sell, they will be able to explain, hey, we have a variance for what's existing. So that's essentially the whole purpose. It has been supported by staff. Again, staff did a fantastic job with the report. It was supported by the Land Use and Zoning Board, and we're just simply respectfully requesting approval. I think the resolution spelled out perfectly exactly what we need, the dimensions and the relief that we're requesting. Granting the request would simply just ratify and confirm the status quo with what we have now with the pre-existing properly permitted property. And most importantly, the two parties, the buyers, they can become disentangled. They can go along their own way. Homeowner, new homeowner now has what he's asking for, previous owner gets their funds released, everybody moves forward. And that's essentially what we're here asking for. And glad to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you. Council?
I've got a question for Derek.
Yeah.
Derek?
And then staff, you're going to say the staff? You, oh, go ahead, Fred, and then we'll have a staff report.
If this building went to the ground, and we grant this, then can it be rebuilt to the old footprint with those set, or do they have to go to regular setback?
It could, but let me clarify, we also have disaster build-back provisions in our code that provide for things like this. This particular issue, I would say, would not be a concern for anyone if it weren't for this particular conflict between the buyer and seller and title policies, and the fact that there's some other issues about compensation that's still owed between the parties. Otherwise, we wouldn't normally look at this. It happens on occasion that a builder builds a house in the wrong place, and someone has to get an after-the-fact variance for an innocent error because then they want to expand or add something, and they're not allowed to expand in nonconformity. This is not that situation. This house was built, it was conforming with the code that it was built. Erosion has taken place that would no longer allow it to be built today, and that showed up as a title issue. As a result, you know, they have reinforced that issue, it's not going to continue to happen, otherwise their house is going to go into the sea. But it's, this is a particular request to deal with a particular issue for one property owner. I do not see this as something that we would normally deal with.
Okay. And then staff, what, thank you.
And if I could, I know the last one was kind of a no-brainer, but it would be good to always hear what the recommendation of the zoning board was in the staff presentation.
So again, it will be repetitive, so I'll just say what we haven't touched on, but it is an 8.4-foot reduction for the eastern portion and a 4.2-foot reduction along the southern portion for this home that is not meeting the existing 25-foot water body setbacks. And as he showed, it's off of McLaughlin Boulevard, off of Hickory. And it is the Estero Bay along the east side. So as Mr. Maurer discussed, the site plan shows that they were intending to meet the 25-foot setbacks when they originally built this house, when it was permitted in 1999. When the survey was taken for this closing this year, they were 8.5 feet short on one side and 4.2 feet short on the other. And this was not something that we could do administratively as a variance, and therefore we're at the public hearing stage currently. And this is their site plan from when they originally built the house, intending to meet And the survey that was shown prior. We do acknowledge that the site was developed lawfully, and it was permitted and finaled out in accordance with what Lee County required at the time. It's currently not meeting setbacks due to erosion, and we will touch on the fact that Lee County did not require site, I'm sorry, spot surveys once the house was completed at the time of construction. So perhaps it was not placed correctly as intended. It is the opinion that these are extraordinary circumstances that would not be repetitive in nature for other homes. The hardship was not self-created. They were not the original buyer, the original buyers or constructors of the home. They bought this house after the fact, and it is the minimum necessary. We're not requesting that if there's additional erosion, it already accounts for that. And we are of the opinion that it is not injuries to the neighborhood because it does not face the street where they can, where they're impeding into the encroachments, and it's not obvious from the water as well. Neighbors are not able to see that. So we do recommend approval of the request. If it were to be granted, we have a few conditions, that it's limited to this house only and this structure only. So in the event there was a fire, the build-back policy would allow them to build it back. But if they chose to demolish the house voluntarily, they cannot build back to the same footprint. They need to meet current setbacks at that time. Any addition to the house must meet setbacks as well. And then the zoning board recommendation was four to three for approval, and I've listed on here each of the board members' opinions and thoughts. If you'd like me to read them, I can.
Thank you.
And then they're in the minutes as well that we provided to you.
Okay. Council, any other?
Oh, second, yeah.
There's been a motion to approve and a second. Public, members of the public that would like to speak at this point, please come forward. Okay, seeing none, there's been a motion to approve and a second.
Motion is with the sta-, which she said.
Yes.
Staff, with the staff conditions.
Correct. Yeah, with staff conditions.
But for discussion, the applicant was asking for no conditions, but are you guys fine with these?
Absolutely fine with the resolution as drafted. Absolutely fine. That makes all the sense in the world to leave it to the current structure. Absolutely.
Unless there's a disaster.
Correct. Yes. Correct. Just abide by the land development code at that time.
Okay. Council, any further discussion? Anybody from the public? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilwoman McCarr.
Hi.
Mayor Simmons.
Hi.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Hi.
Councilman Gibson.
Hi.
Councilman Forbes.
Hi.
Councilman Dewitt.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Thanks a lot. You, too. Okay. Item C, which is special exception for some signage.
Okay. Care yourself. A zoning resolution of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, considering request by NCH Healthcare Systems Incorporated and Naples Community Hospital Incorporated for a special exception to allow three additional wall signs to an existing healthcare facility located at 24040 South Tamiami Trail, Benita Springs, Florida 34134, providing for an effective date.
Great. Welcome.
Good afternoon. Do I have to swear in again?
Oh, why not?
Is it every time, or just?
I'm, we're just trying to come up with things to do today.
Okay. This'll help relax me a little, anyway.
Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name's Mark Shannon, Studio Plus. I'm the representative for Naples Community Hospital today. I'll take you through kind of what we've done to get to where we are today and give you an overview of what we're asking in regards to the additional signage for the facility. So first, starting off kind of a little timeline overview, we submitted for our variance or deviation from the land development code- or deviation from the land development code on March 22nd. The staff's been very helpful all throughout the process. We've come to a couple zoning board meetings after that and after our neighborhood meeting. The staff did recommend for approval. The second zoning board meeting was helped to just provide a little bit more clarity. I did not present at the first one. I presented at the second one, and I think that really gave them an idea of what we're really looking for. It was a little convoluted at first, so we apologize for that. The exception request that we're looking for is relieved from the land development code. The current land development code does not address directly for the City of Benita Springs a healthcare facility directly. It limits the usage of signage for what we're required to do, and I'll get into further by the state in terms of signage and properly labeling all the entry notes to the facility to meet the Agency for Healthcare Administration requirements. And all of that is governed by the reference bullet point up there, the 2014 Guidelines of Design and Construction for Hospitals and Outpatient Facilities. We also provided clear identification, want to provide the clear identification for all the entry points because we've been seeing several patients entering into the wrong entrances to the building, especially when it comes to an emergency room. That's a patient safety issue. We've had some patients show up to even the ambulance entrance, which only is intended for ambulance folks coming in and out. If you get a patient that's trying to get in, and it's an emergency, we want to make sure that they can easily find the right entrance. We also supported that with a letter from one of the physicians who runs the emergency department there, explaining a couple of the occurrences that they saw during operational hours. Additional signs that we are requesting, there's basically three groups. Sign C and sign E, which you'll see on the diagram shortly, would be one sign on each side of the canopy, so it's basically two signs at each location for sign C and E. And then sign B would be one sign at, at the building location shown on the location map you'll see here. This is just a quick orientation to the site. The facility is located directly across from Angelina's on US 41 and just south of WCI's complex between 41 and Walden Center Drive. There is entry points through a shared access drive with Diamond Oaks just to the south, and also an entry point on the Walden Center Drive to the back of the building. This slide will show you the locations of each sign location. We're looking to add emergency to the two sides of the drop-off canopy at the emergency waiting room entrance, and then the two signs to the drop-off canopy over at the NCH Physicians' Group entrance, which leads patients in and out of all of their outpatient services to include their outpatient surgery center. That canopy is a requirement by the 2014 Guidelines for Healthcare Construction as we have to provide some sort of covered canopy for patients to be picked up by a family member if they should go through a procedure up in the surgical center. So, we'll start with some images that I went out to the site and took of what the existing conditions are on the left-hand side in the smaller image, and on the right-hand side, the after is what we'd like to put into place. You'll see that there is currently, based on how we utilize the existing land development code, a sign right on the very end of the canopy that leads into the emergency room. That unfortunately is pretty tough to see. Once you've got in onto the site and parked, whether you're parking in the front or especially in the rear, it, it's easy to get disoriented. And the second view is if I were to have parked in the rear of the building and I'm walking through the public sidewalk area to try to find that emergency entrance, it's kind of hard to identify where I'm going. And if it's an emergency, I may not be paying too much of attention. I may be a little bit more concerned about something else, like a family member. So, this is the sign location for sign types E, the NCH Physicians' Group logo lettering. All of their outpatients are directed to visit this facility through appointments, and this would just help orient them to whether they're going to the imaging or to the outpatient surgery center entrance through that specific nomenclature that they use with all their patients when providing direction. Again, the before and after, and then looking from the other direction, looking to the east, showing the sign. So, these signs here, I would like to point out, for location type E, we would have them programmed on timers if they were backlit. We understand that some of the signs do face residential, and we would like to see them shut off after business hours, which I believe is 6:00 PM at night, and they would not turn back on until the morning. And then finally, sign type B, which would be the logo for NCH, to be listed on the back of the building. That way, if you were traveling down Walden Center, it would be easy to identify that facility. You know it's the Naples Community Hospital facility if you're trying to find either the emergency room or the outpatient services center. Again, this would be another sign that we'd be willing to place on a timer or have it shut off completely once it reaches certain hours of the day. That way, we're not disturbing any of the residents over in, I think it's Pelican Landing or Pelican Marsh, and also the folks at Diamond Oaks. And that's it. Any other questions?
Thank you. And now, we'll hear from our team.
Okay, so like Mr. Shannon stated, this is a request for three additional wall sign locations for the existing healthcare facility, NCH, located off of Tamiami Trail, north of Old 41. As you can see, the site is quite large. It's about 300 feet wide by 740 feet long. The existing healthcare facility is requesting an additional wall sign that states NCH, as he showed the logo, along the west elevation, and then along the south elevation to be facing the east and west would be the NCH Physician Group and Emergency, two sets of signs to face each direction. Our code requires that it be done via a special exception.
Mary, two sets of signs to what?
Two sets of signs for each, I'm sorry, a set of sign for each statement, so...
Three signs.
It's three locations. So, two NCH Physician Group signs, two emergency signs, one NCH logo sign.
I'll let you go.
So, sign one is the wall sign logo along the west elevation at 118 square feet. Signs two and three, which state NCH Physician Group, are 26 and a half feet each, and those are the same on each side of the canopy. And then signs four and five, which state emergency, are eight square feet. And I used the exhibit from Mr. Shannon to imitate where those would be going if approved. Does that clear that up? Okay. So, here's the NCH sign they are requesting along the west elevation. NCH Physician Group along the south elevation to be facing, facing east and west, and then emergency, I'm sorry, emergency would be along the eastern canopy, which would face east and west. So, the site plan is important to show that we find this special exception oriented inappropriate because of the layout of the site.
Inappropriate or appropriate?
Appropriate. I'm sorry, appropriate. The building is located on a 300 by 740-foot parcel. They designed their site consistent with the US 41 overlay, which requires an amenity zone in the front and to orient the building towards US 41. So, there is a great extent of land with a parking lot and easement, and then a 100-foot right-of-way behind the building before it reaches residential. This is a single occupant, and therefore, they're only permitted the two wall signs that they have. But because they have multiple uses, they're requesting additional, which we find to be a special exception in this case. Like I said, it is a distance from, I'm sorry, it is a distance from the building to the right-of-way of Walden Center Drive to residential. So, there is at least 560 feet to the nearest residence and a project wall in between those. And it abuts the resident, residential backyards for Pelican Landing, so they wouldn't be facing the hospital directly. And we do recommend approval for this specific site, for this specific use, and this specific user. So, in the event that they sold to another company with a different name, they would not have the authority to change the verbiage of these signs. They do need to submit for sign and permit approval within six months. If they do not, it's deemed null and void. In addition, they must meet Chapter Six requirements, which requires 10% clear space on all sides. Staff originally recommended that all signage facing residential be dimmed 50% from dusk to dawn. And then zoning board recommended approval and that those signs be turned off completely at 6:00 PM, which the applicant has agreed to.
With, with the exception to the emergency signs, the emergency canopies would be 24 hours a day, I believe.
Yeah. I hope your approval.
Just trying to make sure there's not a fine line because one of those signs does face west towards the residence, but for emergency purposes, we'd request that that one be left on 24/7.
So, the zoning board recommends approval of everything he asked for?
And that all signs be turned off at 6:00 PM. That face residential.
Make a motion that we approve that? What the zoning board recommended?
So, that would be approving the resolution as it's written.
Well, I, I don't think we should turn off the emergencies. Yeah.
And I even think we should maybe start out dimming the whole thing. Because when you're in a state of crisis, you're thinking, I, I know I'll see it, I know I'll see it because there's, it'll be almost blaring at me, and now it's not there, and I'll go buy it, and, well, I'll end up at another one eventually, but it's just, it makes no sense to turn off the emergency lights and even turning off the other lights. Let's start with dimming, and then if there are complaints, turn it off. That's my two cents.
What about the emergency one?
Emergency light 24/7 on full. The other lights after 6:00, well, I mean, after 6:00, it's still light. So, I mean, personally, I would just say, leave them alone, but if there's such an issue, at, at dusk, dim to dawn, so that it's not 6:00 o'clock. It's, now it's what, 8:30, 8:00? I don't know. But dusk to dawn, not...
Mike?
Well, and, and I can see the Physicians' Group, you know, they close at a certain time. I can see those being turned off. But, but I agree, I think the emergency lights should be on, even the one that faces residential. Possibly dimming as long, you know, if it's still visible. But, but I do agree, the one up on the building, I would try dimming it first because if you're coming down Walden Center Drive, the emergency sign's very small. You're gonna see NCH before you're gonna see that little emergency sign. So, I would say leave it on, but, but dim it 50%, like staff recommended.
Okay.
Are, are those...
That's fine for us. Any equipment that we put in place?
Are those light fixtures one that you can dim?
Yes. They're all LED, and anything that we put in place for a timer for dimming would allow us the opportunity to shut it off. So, it would be a programming thing. We wouldn't have to do any kind of change to the materials of construction in order to turn them off if we run into a situation where a resident starts to have issues, they feel like they're getting glaring light in one of their windows or something, we could just have the timer reset and have it shut off completely instead of partially.
So, I, I'd make the motion to approve with staff's conditions.
With the exception of emergencies staying on?
Yes.
Well, yeah, well, because staff's conditions were the lights staying on, just being dimmed, dusted on.
But it was she, the staff's condition was all lights to be dimmed.
All lights, so with the exception of the emergency lights staying on 24 hours.
Okay.
Dusted on.
I'll second that. The, the emergency lights need to stay on.
Yeah, emergency full brightness, say, all the other ones 50% dusted on.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay. There's been a motion in a second. Counsel, is there further discussion?
Yeah, just quickly, I'm gonna vote no, only because I don't want to torture this thing, but some people say, well, what about people in Pelican Landing? If they can see it, they can object, just kind of approves it. So, you know, I, I clearly see the point about emergency signs. The rest, in the middle of the night, I don't know, particularly if we don't have an avenue for the people who live in Pelican Landing to put their hand up and say, oh, excuse me, but that's my view.
Members from the public? Anybody from the public that would like to speak on this? Okay, there's been a motion to keep the emergency lights 24/7, and then the others, dusk to dawn, a 50%, well, reduction, dimming, I guess you'd call it. There's been a motion in a second. Is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Flynn?
No.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilman Dewitt?
Aye.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Derek, team, anything else?
There are no minutes to approve this time.
Okay. Fantastic, so...
Can I just make a point?
Yes, absolutely.
What I heard Laura say, I agree with. If you wanted to bring a green sheet next time...
Okay, and they also wanted with regard to towers, the height of towers in our...
I'm talking about the zoning board on the...
The zoning board also said that they wanted us, counsel, to do something about the height of towers. So, I'll...
You'll, you'll be having a, an item come forward to you, a special, a special exception in a variance. I was heard by the zoning board this week that talks about cell phone towers. I think maybe after you've heard that, there, you'll can see the recommendation.
I wasn't aware of that, but I was just talking about the setback point.
Yes, but, but they also, I mean, Barbara made a point of voting no, just so that I would bring it up at council.
Okay. Do whatever you want.
No.
Whatever you want.
I'm told to bring it up.
Fantastic, and I see that our next meeting is October 16th, and motion to adjourn.
Next meeting is an hour.
We are adjourned.